Funding for This is Nashville comes from you, our listeners, and Alliance Bernstein. Since 2019, employees have impacted our community by giving more than 5,000 hours of volunteerism in middle Tennessee. AllianceBernstein.com. Alliance Bernstein is not affiliated with National Public Radio.
I'm Khalil E. Colonna, and this is Nashville. The 61st year of the Metro Council is underway. New council members have been sworn in, and they're getting into addressing the issues that are important to their constituents. Infrastructure, transportation, and the Speedway are only at the tip of the iceberg. There are new faces in Metro Council, and coupled with a new O'Connell administration, it's important to have a greater understanding of how the elected officials in city government go about doing the jobs they campaigned for. That's why I'm excited to talk with my next guest. Nicole Williams is the go-to expert on Metro Council. You may know her by her Twitter or X handle @StartlesEasily. She writes a column for the Nashville scene on Metro Council, and she joins me now. Nicole, good to have you back. Thanks for being here.
Glad to be back, Khalil.
This is so awesome. Okay, so we have a new Metro Council with some brand-new faces in the body. Who is a newcomer that has caught your eye?
Well, there's one newbie who's really fascinating. It's... You know what, Khalil? I'm sorry, I can't do this.
Are you okay?
I just can't.
Do we need to go to break? Okay, let's go to break.
No, 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 no. Get it together, girl. You got this.
Okay.
You see, Khalil, local government is really important to me. It's where everything happens. It has a more direct, noticeable impact on our daily lives than any other level of government. It's where the rubber meets the road, literally. Potholes, trash pickup, parks, sidewalks, it's all local government. The media landscape focuses so much on federal and state-level government, but it's the local level that hits closest to home, and that's where you can really see advocacy making a meaningful difference in policy outcomes. That's why I'm obsessed with it.
Hmm, I feel you. It is super important, but it can be monotonous and hard to follow.
Not to mention boring. I used to be a theater kid, though, so I'm used to spicing up the not-so-spicy. And that's what I do with our Metro Council. I add a splash of satire and a pinch of parody, you know, to raise the level of intrigue.
Ooh, the drama.
In fact, I wonder what a Metro Council soap opera might be like.
What would that be like?
At one public square, we have 40 Metro Council members, one Vice Mayor.
You're recognized.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I speak against the motion to defer.
We need to have this composition.
A twixt in between and a whole lot of volatility.
Their relationships and decisions will determine what happens to the people of Davidson County. What will they decide? How will they work together? We now take you inside council chambers.
We come upon Vice Mayor Angie Henderson. She is carefully crafting a missive to the Metro Council.
Okay, roll that back. Nicole, what is a missive?
Missive, noun. A missive is a letter, especially a long or unofficial one, to say nothing about potentially being boring. That would be a formal missive. Sometimes they can be quite delightful. A fine example of a humorous missive. That is all. Ta-ta.
Okay, back to Angie Henderson. She's our leading lady, the woman with the gavel, the... Drumroll, please. Vice Mayor of the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County.
That's a mouthful. So, the Vice Mayor, is that like the Vice President?
Sort of. Like the Vice President, the Vice Mayor is the presiding officer of our legislative body, the Metro Council. And like the Vice President, the Vice Mayor becomes the mayor if the mayor dies, or resigns, or gets abducted by aliens.
Aliens?
The truth is out there, Khalil.
All right, let's bring it back down to earth. Do the mayor and the Vice Mayor run on the ticket together?
No. Actually, the Vice Mayor is a separate countywide elected official who runs her own campaign, so she just answers to the people of Nashville. She doesn't take orders from the mayor, or from anyone, for that matter.
So, Vice Mayor Henderson, what's she like?
Vice Mayor Henderson is a force. She does not pull punches. She's not afraid to call out cronyism and corruption. She's a real call-it-like-I-see-it type of person.
I rise as well in opposition to Mr. Solomon's appointment. I hear Mr. Solomon is an excellent lawyer. I hear he's done great work on the corporate side for Bridgestone, and we even got a letter from Bridgestone to say so. We also got a letter from the former Mayor Dean and the former Mayor Purcell. So this administration is pulling out all the stops, but I am asking colleagues to read between the lines.
She's also absolutely lovely. Like, she brought donuts to a polling place during the runoff after she'd already been elected in the general election, just to thank people for doing their civic duty.
And she's new to this role, right?
Yes, brand-new. She just became the first person in Metro's 60-year history to beat an incumbent Vice Mayor running for reelection, and she is definitely taking the council in a different direction.
Folks really feel like things are out of alignment, both council members and the community, and so I think it is very important that we organize the office to support council members in district service and make sure that council members have the information that they need, but also sort of level-set around how we want to do this committee work.
Wow, she sounds like she'll have some pretty strong opinions about the way things work in council chambers.
Yes, it's going to be very interesting. Okay, now, where was I?
Vice Mayor Henderson was writing a letter.
Ah, yes, the missive.
The letter.
Remember the whole "I used to be a theater kid" thing? Yeah, I wasn't kidding about that.
Okay, okay. The missive.
Vice Mayor Henderson is composing a missive. It's the most hotly anticipated communique of the year. Khalil?
Okay, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Back to the communique. I imagine her at a desk in an office lit with lamps, placed just so for the perfect balance of utility and ambiance, no fluorescent overhead nonsense for our leading lady, methodically dipping her quill into a small pot of ink.
Okay, I know I said I'd be quiet, but a quill? It's 2023, Nicole. She was sitting at a computer.
Can we meet halfway? Typewriter.
You know what? Yes, typewriter it is.
So she's writing this letter announcing the committee chairs?
Ooh, like her starting lineup. Sports, right?
Uh, okay, sports.
I am pleased to announce the 2023 Metro Council Standing Committee Chairs. Budget and Finance, Delisha Porterfield. Transportation and Infrastructure, Sean Parker. Government Operations and Regulations, Russ Bradford. Public Facilities, Arts and Culture, Joy Stiles. Public Health and Safety, Erin Evans. Rules Confirmation and Public Elections, Sandra Sepulveda. And Charter Revision, Sherry Wiener.
Oh, so who's getting this letter from Vice Mayor Henderson?
Everyone on the council gets this letter, but the freshmen who are getting this might not know the significance of these appointments. And by the way, we've got 19 newbies out of 40 council members.
Wow, that's almost half. Okay, but Nicole, you promised me intrigue and drama.
You want drama? I'll give you drama.
I love it.
So Henderson's predecessor, Jim Schulman, had a tendency toward retaliation. He wielded his power over committee assignments like a cudgel. If you crossed him, you were cooked. Back in 2021, a few council members ended up in his crosshairs and got pulled off of important committees. You may remember that y'all asked Schulman about this when he and Henderson were on your show earlier this year.
After two years of keeping people on different committees, you review and figure out where things are. There are different things that go into making those determinations. There are different people that where you try to review kind of what's happened over the past couple of years, and then decisions are made.
That response? That's BS. I mean, it's true, he does have ultimate authority, and he's not required to explain his decisions, but he told multiple council members he was doing this because they, and I quote, "needed to be taught a lesson."
I bet that didn't go over too well.
No, it did not. So when Vice Mayor Henderson was considering who to appoint to committees, she saw a chance to not only appoint super-qualified folks, but also to right some wrongs of the past. She's using this opportunity to set a brand-new tone for the council.
Okay, all right, y'all.
Now, let's talk about two of the council members who faced the brunt of Schulman's retaliation. We'll start with Councilmember-at-Large Delisha Porterfield. She's going to be chairing the Budget and Finance Committee.
Hmm, that sounds important.
It is. Every piece of legislation that has anything to do with money flows through that committee. Like when the city got hundreds of millions of dollars from the federal government for COVID relief, you know, the CARES Act?
Yeah.
It's like that. And the Chair of that committee gets to put together the council's proposed budget. It's the hottest ticket in town, definitely the most sought-after chairmanship.
All right, so what's Councilmember Porterfield like?
So, she's fierce but kind. She's about fighting for the people who don't have the resources or ability to fight for themselves. You can always count on her to center the voices of the working class in policy debates. She used to be a teacher, and you can definitely feel that nurturing energy when she speaks.
I think if we can remember that today is everyone's first meeting, and if we can show a little bit of grace to our colleagues as people are learning procedures.
When people start to get a little riled up, she gets that teacher voice.
Oh, oh, I know the teacher voice. Okay, class, what do I always say?
That's not the teacher voice I was thinking of.
Listen, Nicole, I was a teacher. That's an underpaid and frustrated teacher's voice.
I always forget you were a teacher. Okay, fair enough. So remember how I was telling you former Vice Mayor Schulman had retaliated against some council members when he was in charge?
Yes, you were giving me intrigue.
Yes. Well, Councilmember Porterfield was one of those people Schulman punished for her votes. She had just finished up a year as the Vice Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, a position that would normally make you a top contender to be Chair, and Schulman not only didn't make her Chair, he pulled her off of the committee altogether. So Vice Mayor Henderson's decision to make her the Chair is kind of powerfully symbolic.
Word. Okay, so now, tell me about the Rules Confirmations and Public Elections Committees. There was some drama, too, there, right?
Yes, a very similar thing happened there. The Rules Committee is the first stop for all of the mayor's appointments to Nashville's many boards and commissions. They vet nominees to make sure they're qualified, and they can also stop council members from moving forward with legislation that's filed after the deadline. Councilmember Sandra Sepulveda, who got pulled off of the committee by Schulman in retaliation for her votes, will be chairing that committee.
See, the people kept telling me I was pronouncing her name wrong. They said it was Sepulveda.
They would not be the first people to mispronounce Councilmember Sepulveda's last name.
Councilwoman Sepulveda.
We've got Councilwoman Sepulveda.
First Council Lady. Sepulveda. Always mess up.
Councilmember Sepulveda.
It's Sepulveda. I've decided to start correcting people even further now.
Finally, I've been vindicated. Okay, what's Councilmember Sepulveda like?
Councilmember Sepulveda is one of the youngest council members, and she's the only Hispanic council member currently serving. In that way, she's a trailblazer. She's really pushed for more diversity on Metro's boards and commissions, and she's always thinking about ways to remove barriers to accessing city services for people in the immigrant community. Also, basically, anytime she gives a speech on the council floor, I start to tear up. She's so brilliant and engaging and funny and...
Hey, hey, Nicole, you good?
Yeah, oh, yes, sorry about that. Now, where was I? Okay, so basically Angie is staging the chambers after all the drama from the previous session. She's trying to cleanse the energy for maximum legislative impact and maybe avoid meetings that go until 3:00 AM.
And so the Metro Council has concluded what is the longest council meeting on record, almost 11 hours.
Now, we've got quite a few council members who are new to this, right? I mean, 19 out of 40, that is a lot. So what's it been like for them?
It's like the first day of school. Only this time, everyone is watching you. You're trying to figure out your voting machine, people are pronouncing your name wrong, you're convinced you're gonna fall flat on your face in front of all of Nashville. You are stressed. On top of it all, you've got a big decision to make. You have to vote on coveted leadership positions, like Planning and Zoning Committee Chair.
Sounds exciting. But wait, hold on. How are they gonna make that decision? Do they even know these people?
It's gotta be tough. You've gotten letters from the people running for the position, you're getting pressure from your caucus, you're getting emails from constituents, texts from lobbyists, your head is spinning.
Dear colleagues, I am reaching out to let you know...
...primary motivation for seeking the position of pro tempore president. Pro tempore?
Pro tempore.
Sounds like shrimp tempura.
In my first term in office, I've been privileged to assume multiple leadership roles.
While my professional and civic experiences have been rewarding...
...is the potential to serve this council and our community further.
I am genuinely enthusiastic.
I am genuinely enthusiastic about them.
And the work we can accomplish together. Warmer gods.
Wow, that is a lot to ask of people who just got there. So with this vote, they're gonna end up making friends, enemies?
Yeah, it's a pretty consequential vote.
I wonder how this will shake out. When they do vote, will it go smoothly?
I'm glad you asked that question, because in the past, these voting machines had minds of their own, always malfunctioning. In truth, they kind of suck.
Okay, wait, wait. These aren't Dominion voting machines, because Nashville Public Radio cannot afford that smoke.
No, 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 no. They're made by a company that shall not be named. But over the years, former Vice Mayor Schulman had this to say about them.
So here's what we're gonna do. We're not trusting these machines. I don't have any confidence at this point in any of this stuff in front of me, in terms of rebooting and then booting back up. So we are... No, not you all, the machines.
Oh, Lord.
And remember, this is just the first day of this [BLEEP].
This concludes our first agenda. We are gonna do this, colleagues, about 93 more times together over the next four years, so let's make the most of our work together. Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay. On favor?
There are many questions left unanswered. Who will council members elect to prestigious positions? Will the council poke the bear that is the state legislature? Will a resolution on the Speedway continue to get the runaround? Will voting machines work? Stay tuned to find out more on the next Inside the Council Chambers.
All right, we have to take a short break, but when we come back, we'll talk more with Nicole Williams about what you can expect from the 61st year of Metro Council. Join the conversation by tweeting us at ThisIsNashville. We'll be right back.
Funding for This is Nashville comes from you, our listeners, and Music City Prep Clinic, Nashville-based provider for prep and offering comprehensive sexual health services in an environment designed to be safe, professional, and shame-free. Learn more at musiccityprep.org.
I'm Khalil E. Colonna, and this is Nashville. A lot of focus is given to state or national politics, but it's on the local plane where things get done. The decisions made by officials in local government have the most impact on our daily lives. If you want new sidewalks in your neighborhood, you can write or call your local council member. If you have an issue with that new development, you guessed it, contact your local council member. It's important to follow the actions of our Metro Council, but it can be difficult. Now, before the break, Nicole Williams took us inside council chambers, and now she's back to talk about some of the things we can look forward to from our elected officials this term. Nicole, thanks again for being here.
So excited, Khalil. This is so much fun.
So much fun, indeed. Happy to have you here. Okay, so we've got a newly-elected council. They met for the first time last week. What were some of the big topics that came up?
So that first meeting, a lot of the council members, especially the newbies, the freshmen, were really trying to get their sea legs under them and sort of set a tone for the way things are gonna look for the next four years. I would say the biggest thing that came up was funding for school resource officers, which has been kind of a contentious topic. The resolution that the council was considering was just about reimbursing MNPD, the Police Department, for school resource officers that they already have in schools, and that was based on some legislation at the state level. But the council did defer that resolution to give some time for some council members to get some questions answered, so we'll see what happens with that at the next meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, now, were there any fireworks, any drama that happened?
There was one moment in the Public Health and Safety Committee that really caught my eye. Freshman Councilmember Joyce Smith Kimbrough from District 1 had a little bit of a, you know, face-off with Councilmember Bob Nash, who is in his second term from District 27. Councilmember Nash was expressing his support for a resolution that, again, had to do with a program that the police are implementing, and Councilmember Kimbrough had questions, wanted to get some answers. Councilmember Nash came back and sort of answered those questions based on what he thinks about what the police are gonna do with the money, and Councilmember Kimbrough straight up asked him, like, "Did you used to work for the police?" It got a little testy, and Councilmember Nash said very proudly that he did work for the police. He was, he retired as a commander in the East Precinct, and Councilmember Kimbrough replied, "That's what I figured." So there might be some more testy exchanges between those two in the future.
All right, we'll keep an eye on that. Now, did we learn anything about the freshman class of council members, the newbies in the group?
Yeah, to me, it looks like they're going to be somewhat more inquisitive than the previous council. They are really going to, you know, push back and ask more questions, I think, at least that's what I got from this first meeting, especially when it comes to requests from the Police Department. So that was sort of a thread that ran through the meeting.
Okay. Vice Mayor Henderson, this was the first meeting she's presided over, right?
Yes.
So how did it go procedurally?
Well, it was a little rough. I'm gonna be honest with you.
Okay.
But I think that that is really to be expected. She is brand-new. She's tried to implement some changes in the technology to hopefully make things run more smoothly in the future, but she got tripped up a few times and, you know, things kind of devolved a little bit with those technical difficulties, but I've been assured that those are being addressed, and hopefully the next meeting will run a little more smoothly. And she was pretty honest about that, you heard in the clip.
You know, we had Vice Mayor Henderson on the show earlier when she was running against the former Vice Mayor, Jim Schulman, and she talked about Robert's Rules of Order being something that's, you know, necessary in order to run effective meetings and to legislate, yet it's very, very confusing. I'm wondering how she's helping the freshman council members kind of get up to speed on that procedure.
Yeah, it's definitely not intuitive. I don't think we are all born understanding Robert's Rules of Order, and in addition to that, the council has its own rules that sort of sometimes conflict with Robert's Rules, so it can be really difficult. I know that she had an orientation for council members before the term started, and I think that the procedure and the rules, that was something that she did go over with them, but it's gonna take them a while to just get used to it. You kind of just have to jump in and, like, get used to it by doing it.
Yeah, learn how to swim while you're learning how to swim.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so, you know, there's a lot of big issues, several big issues that weren't fully resolved during the last council term. Tell me about some of these.
I think that the biggest sort of project that was not resolved during the last council term will be the East Bank. So the new Titans Stadium, that deal was approved by the council, so that's done, and, you know, they're working toward building the new stadium. Part of that deal was that Metro was able to sort of revert to having control over development for, I think, about 66 acres of land on the East Bank, and so a big project this term for the council and the new mayor, Freddie O'Connell, will be figuring out how to, how to develop that land in a way that meets the needs of citizens and residents, but also allows for some sort of property taxes, sales tax, so that the city can make some money off of that. And actually, Adam Friedman at the Tennessee Lookout had a really interesting piece recently about this, specifically when it comes to affordable housing goals. And then the other thing that was really big was the Speedway. I think probably people know that the deal fell apart at the last minute last term, so that's gonna be interesting to see if Mayor Freddie O'Connell will try to resurrect that deal, or if he will try to just have Metro, you know, fix up the Speedway in a way that makes it more attractive.
What are some agenda items that you'll be keeping your eye on at the next council meeting?
I think first off, there are going to be elections of several leadership positions within the council, so that is something that'll be interesting. You'll sort of see where people's loyalties lie, and that's always illuminating to me. And then there's the confirmation of the Metro Legal Director, Wally Dietz, who is a holdover from the Cooper administration, and then the new Finance Director, Kevin Crumbo, who served in the Cooper administration, but then left a couple of years in, and Mayor Freddie O'Connell has brought him back. So the council has to sign off on those appointments, but I don't expect that to be controversial.
Okay, so these leadership positions, does Vice Mayor Henderson appoint them, or are they elected by their fellow council members?
That's a great question, and it's a little complicated, unsurprisingly.
Yeah.
Like most things at Metro Council. So Vice Mayor Henderson appoints the chairs of most of the committees, but there is one committee where the Chair of that committee is elected by the council, and that's the Planning and Zoning Committee. And the reason the Chair is elected by the council is it's actually in our Metro Nashville Charter, like, our founding documents. And that council member who gets elected also serves as the council's representative on the Planning Commission. So the people who are vying for that position, which is probably the most sought-after of the leadership positions, are Emily Benedict, Councilmember Emily Benedict, and then Councilmember Jennifer Gamble, and that's gonna be really interesting. I think it'll be a close vote. There are a couple of others, like the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Hey, that's important.
It's so important, yes. Councilmember Quinn Evan Siegel, who is the only freshman council member, like, running for a leadership position. I think at this point, she might be the only person who is running for that, so she could be elected by default. And then President Pro Tem, you probably heard in your amazing actors reading off those letters, President Pro Tem is sort of the stand-in for the Vice Mayor if the Vice Mayor is out sick or needs a break because she's been reading off agenda items for two hours. And the people going for that right now are Councilmembers Russ Bradford and Zulfat Swara. But I have just heard some breaking news this morning. Councilmember Bradford may have decided to... Councilmember Bradford may have decided to take his name out of contention for President Pro Tem and may be looking for a seat on the Audit Committee, which is the last thing, those are the last positions that the council will elect. And the Audit Committee sounds really boring, but they deal with, you know, internal audits of metro departments, which is actually super important. So I've heard that Councilmember Bradford, Courtney Johnston, and Berkeley Allen will be looking to get one of the two seats on that committee.
All right, we'll be keeping an eye on all of this. Nicole Williams covers the activities of our Metro Council. You can find her on X, formerly known as Twitter, @startleseasily. She writes a column for the Nashville scene, and she'll be back in a few weeks with another edition of Inside the Council Chambers. Nicole, thanks so much for this. Really appreciate you.
Thank you, as always. Looking forward to the next one.
We have to take a short break. When we come back, we'll talk with three members of the WPLN News Desk about some of the important news of the week. You can join the conversation by tweeting us at ThisIsNashville. We'll be right back. I'm Khalil Akalona, and this is Nashville. Here at Nashville Public Radio, we're blessed to work alongside intrepid reporters in the WPLN Newsroom. So today, we're highlighting some of the stories they followed this week. Three great reporters are here for a Reporters Roundup. Joining me are Rose Gilbert, our General Assignment Reporter, Alexis Marshall, who covers education, and rounding out the panel is our healthcare reporter Catherine Sweeney. Thanks to you all for being here today. How's it going?
Pretty good.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, this is going to be great. So Rose, let's start with your story that has had local and international impact. You've been covering the local reactions and implications to the war between Israel and Hamas, including reactions from Nashville's Jewish and Palestine communities. Just for context, anyone who may not know, can you kind of tell us how this current conflict began?
Yeah, so, you know, this past Saturday, Hamas launched a surprise attack on Israel and resulting in, I believe, the death toll has surpassed 1,000 now dead, thousands wounded, and also several abductees numbered north of 100, south of 150 is what I've been seeing. And then Israel retaliated with heavy airstrikes on the Gaza Strip, which is a very small, blockaded piece of land with a dense population. So that's ongoing now.
What has the local reaction been?
A lot of heartbreak, a lot of grief, heartbreak, anger is what I've seen from everyone.
Okay, now, I understand that you attended a gathering held by members of Nashville's Jewish community. Can you tell us more about who was there and what happened during the gathering?
Yeah, so the Jewish Federation of Greater Nashville held a solidarity rally for Israel at the Gordon JCC. It had a lot of support from, you know, some very recognizable names in Tennessee politics. Governor Bill Lee spoke there, I spotted Heidi Campbell, Alice Rowley. But maybe more importantly, over 700 people from the community were there. You know, in the audience, at the end, they had all the Israeli folks come up to the stage to sing the National Anthem. And now, it's worth noting that the folks who were Israeli themselves numbered about two dozen in the audience, but many more are directly affected. Most people who were there had a direct connection, a family, a friend. Many have children who are returning as reservists to fight in IDF. So just an extreme amount of grief and, like I said, a lot of anger, a lot of outrage.
You know, our city has a Palestinian community as well. Have you talked with any of them?
Yes, I have. I've spoken with two Palestinian gentlemen, including one man who we had on our show, Isambah Hor, who, you know, both sides of his family are from Gaza, and most of his mother and father's family are still in Gaza right now. So as you can imagine, he is extremely anxious for their safety. I would say it's interesting, right? I spoke with an Israeli man who lost a family member and had another family member kidnapped in the initial attack by Hamas. I spoke with Palestinian folks, including a Palestinian man who has family directly in the line of fire with airstrikes and who can't get out. It was remarkable how similar the interviews were. Both men were heartbroken. Both men were so very angry, and both kind of acknowledged intellectually that they didn't want loss of life on either side, but were having trouble finding empathy or the ability to speak empathetically about the other side. And said as much to me that they wish they could say that, but couldn't.
It's like this tragic loss of innocent lives on both sides of this issue, you know? And there's, we know that there's been tensions and conflict in Gaza for decades now, but this feels a little bit different to me as a person. You know, you just expressed how these two men had very similar reactions to the pain and trauma that they're going through. What else did people talk to you about as far as their most immediate and pressing concerns?
Yeah, I mean, the most pressing concern is getting in touch with family and friends, right? Hearing from people on the ground. I will add that, like you said, this is, this most pressing conflict is 24/7 on the news right now. It's not a new subject. And I think one other sentiment I've been hearing a lot from especially Palestinian folks, but not only Palestinian folks, is frustration with the shortness of the international attention span when it comes to Israel and Palestine. You know, a lot of people expressed, you know, Isambah Hor, who I spoke to, like I said, he was like, you know, "I've lost family before this moment. My family was in danger before this conflict." And people weren't asking me about it then. So that's another common sentiment I've heard.
Are there any individuals or groups in the city who are working to bring the Jewish and Palestinians communities together for you to have like a movement of peace?
I think it's very fresh, and I think that that is a lot to ask. I would also say that Nashville has a strong history of interfaith councils, partnerships, dialogue. I have not seen anything on this moment just yet. But I know that in the past, and this issue goes beyond just religious and interfaith dialogue, but that is a groundwork that Nashville has here.
You going to be talking with anyone next?
Yes, this afternoon, I am talking with a Vanderbilt expert in conflict resolution in the Middle East. So I don't think we're going to come to any long-term solutions during our conversation, but I'm really interested to hear what she has to say.
All right, thank you so much for that. Now Alexis, you've been covering the state's historic underfunding of Tennessee State University. And last month, the Biden Administration sent a letter to Governor Billie indicating that TSU has been underfunded by $2.1 billion, that's with a capital B, dollars, over the past three decades. The news of TSU's underfunding, it's been known for over two years now, but this new estimate of just how much, it's kind of like quadruple what the state originally thought. What's been done to remedy this by the state? And by that, I mean, like, what are our governors and legislators saying about this issue?
Yeah, so, like you said, Tennessee, it's not news that Tennessee had been underfunding TSU. It's just that the state's original estimate had been in the neighborhood of half a billion dollars. And so last year, the state did allocate about $250 million to give to TSU as sort of a lump sum to invest in infrastructure. But so far, on this new number, Governor Bill Lee has not really directly addressed whether he even accepts or, like, rejects this estimate from the Federal Department of Education and Agriculture. And then another member of his party, Senator Beau Watson, who chairs the Finance Ways and Means Committee, a really influential position for somebody in charge of, you know, money decisions for the state, has cast doubt on that $2.1 billion number. In an interview with me, he said, you know, "We're going to talk to our federal partners about this, but I don't know if their estimates are always as accurate as they would like for you to believe." And he said that the state, from his perspective, is going to continue using their half-billion-dollar estimate. So that's sort of where things stand right now, from my perspective.
Okay, now, this weekend's a big one. It happens to be homecoming week right now. How is TSU capitalizing on this moment to where all eyes are on the school?
Yeah, I think that students are trying to use this as an opportunity to spread the word, and that's actually kind of predated homecoming. Last week, there was this huge town hall meeting at the school, and I talked to an alumni there from the class of 1986, who was really fired up about this lack of funding. And I think we're going to hear a little bit from her now. Do you plan on coming to homecoming events?
Oh, yes. I didn't before today. I was going to travel to Memphis to be with my niece. I'm going to change my plans and partake in the homecoming and be supportive of my school.
So a lot of student leaders and faculty and administration are trying to spread the word about this because that's kind of the first step in building a coalition that can actually negotiate with legislators. Like, students on campus say that they want to work with the state to resolve this issue, but they also acknowledge that they have legal options. One of the people at that town hall last week was Attorney Ben Crump, who is a famous civil rights attorney, has represented the families of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd. And he said outright that if students wanted to file a lawsuit against the state, they have that option, and there's precedent for it.
If you're just tuning in, this is Nashville, and I'm your host Khalil Akalona. You're listening to our Reporters Roundtable with members of the WPLN News Desk. I'm joined by General Assignment Reporter Rose Gilbert, Education Reporter Alexis Marshall, and Healthcare Reporter Catherine Sweeney. You can tweet us your comments at ThisIsNashville. Now, Lexi, tell me, this is a lot of money. What is being shortchanged? What has it really meant over the years for TSU?
I mean, it's kind of hard to wrap your mind around $2.1 billion. Like, that's $100 million 21 times over. So just kind of a mind-boggling amount of money. But students say that they've missed out on the opportunity to be competitive with their peers across the state, you know? I mean, basically, TSU is supposed to be funded equitably under federal law to the University of Tennessee, and the facilities are just not the same. And they say that they missed out on the opportunity to have better housing, better academic programs, to be potentially like an R1 research university, which is a really prestigious designation. But basically, just missed out on a lot of opportunities and, in effect, like, the opportunity to be competitive with their peers across Tennessee.
You mentioned some of the state legislators are kind of questioning the $2.1 billion label that the Biden Administration has given. Is there any type of opening for them to talk and to come to crunch the numbers, to figure out who has the more correct number for all these funds that have been taken away or prohibited from?
So Senator Beau Watson had said that he is open to talking with federal partners. And, you know, he and the governor have both said that they want to continue to working with, continue working with TSU, and that they view TSU as an important part of the higher education community in Tennessee. I think we're going to have to wait and see whether we get a full-throated, like, endorsement of this $2.1 billion number. But from what I've been seeing, it's something that TSU is not backing down on.
All right, we know you're going to be keeping a close and watchful eye on this. Now Catherine, returning to you. You've been reporting in collaboration with the Kaiser Family Foundation Health News on teen pregnancy rates increasing since Tennessee's abortion ban. How'd you get the idea for this story?
Yeah, I like to explain how I got this idea because I think, you know, talking to friends, they don't really know how reporters go about starting on stories. They think that our editors give us assignments, but that's really rarely the case. So for this, I talked to doctors across the state for just different stuff, completely separate story. But off the cuff, they would say, "We're already seeing more teen births. I'm already seeing more teen patients." And so I wanted to see, you know, if the numbers would test that out, and if so, why that would be happening.
What'd you find?
Well, the numbers are a little tough. So this is, I mean, all the stories you're hearing about today, we start reporting on things before it's all done and the dust is settled, right? So it's kind of hard to tell what exactly is going on. But the numbers basically show, on a national level, teen births had been in freefall for 30 years. And all of a sudden, the rate of that going down is kind of leveling off. And some researchers are concerned that when we get state-specific numbers later in the year, places like Texas and here in Tennessee are going to show that they're losing ground on dropping teen pregnancy rates.
That's interesting. Now, tell me, why would, you know, the pandemic happened, a lot of teens suffered in that, everybody else, why would the pandemic have an effect on teen pregnancy?
Yeah, that is a great question. So there were a few things that played into why this could be happening that I talked to the researchers about, and some of them are a little more obvious. There's been some attacks politically on sex ed. That's especially been happening across the country, less so in Tennessee. Obviously, there are a lot of states, including Tennessee, that have implemented abortion bans. But one of the things that surprised me the most was pandemic-related increases. So a lot of advocates I talked with told me that the pandemic really worsened teen mental health. We're seeing that everywhere. There was a Vanderbilt study that found, like, one in three kids in this state have been diagnosed with depression or anxiety. And, you know, bad mental health, mental health struggles, that is tied for everyone, including teenagers, to riskier sexual behaviors. So that's something that we're seeing. It's also associated with more toxic relationships, just more tumultuous life choices. So, yeah, the pandemic really worsened those. And it also, it also delayed care for a lot of people. People couldn't get into health clinics, or they couldn't go to the hospital or the doctor. So people who might have otherwise gotten an IUD or on birth control or some other preventative measure maybe just didn't, and they ended up getting pregnant.
You know, I think anyone who has an unexpected pregnancy has a lot to deal with, but why is this situation especially difficult for teens?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think it's especially difficult for teens, and especially difficult for teens in this area, right? So one thing that's tough for teens everywhere, they can't sign a lease themselves. If they need to go live by themselves, they have to have somebody co-sign. They might not have family, that's really tough. And then on top of that, I mean, here in Nashville, rent has exploded, and these people are trying to pay for childcare. They probably, if they're teenagers, right, they don't have college degrees, they're not doing these, like, career-level jobs. They're trying to, like, pay for rent here on minimum wage while taking care of a baby. All the while, they, you know, they're running a household, and they haven't done that before. So it's really tough.
What are you looking for as this story develops?
Yeah, I mean, again, we don't have as much data as we could have yet. To kind of dive into that a little bit, just at the end, the federal data we have only captures a few months after Roe was struck down, and, you know, it's still really fresh. So I'm excited to get further along and have the numbers be a little bit more concrete.
That is our Reporters Roundup with General Assignment Reporter Rose Gilbert, Education Reporter Alexis Marshall, and Healthcare Reporter Catherine Sweeney. Thanks to you all for being here. Thank you all so much for your reporting.
Thank you.
All right, and thanks to you for tuning in this hour. This is Nashville is a production of WPLN and Nashville Public Radio. Today's episode was produced by yours truly. It was directed by Chad Dastin. Sound design was done by our technical director, Laura Boach. Live tweeting was handled by Elizabeth Burton. The masterminds behind our theme music are Lirang and Amir Blade. Special, special thanks to Nicole Williams and the Inside Council Chambers players. That's Celia Gregory, Carrie Pagetta, Isaiah Miller, Ray Curriton-Dillinger, Michael Robertson, Josh Connors, Suzanne Vaughn, Jason Moon Wilkins, Kendall Lavecchio, and Carly Butler. Thanks to you all. You can listen back at thisisnashville.org or wherever you get your podcasts, and the conversation doesn't end here. Tweet us at ThisIsNashville, find us on Instagram, and tell us what you want from our show by filling out our quick survey online. This is Nashville. I'm Khalil Akalona. We'll see you Monday, everybody, and be good to each other.